Well done, everybody. It's right on cue. So I'll call it Order Six Oh One. I'll call it Order this Council Workshop, November fifth nineteen or twenty twenty five. It's not, it's not the twentieth century anymore. We'll, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Okay, we'll begin with citizens to be heard. So this is an opportunity for anybody who has any public comment they would like to give on, on Borough Business and step forward to the podium and, and we'll hear you out. Is there anybody? Hey Jen, Jen, if you want to come up to the podium. We know, we know who you are, but we need it for the record once you're up there.
So my name's Jen McDuffie. I live at seven oh two North Pitt Street here in Carlisle. And it's not until the end of the agenda. But what I'd like to talk about is the resolution for community solar and community choice aggregation. I know that um Third Act PA put together a resolution asking municipalities to sign it so that we could take tons of signed resolutions to Harrisburg to get the Senate to pass House Bill Five Oh Four, which passed the State House this past spring, and the Senate has just been sitting on it. And that bill is for the legalization of community solar in Pennsylvania. And in, in relation to that, I just want to make three points. The first is that solar energy is and may be perhaps the utility of the future. And as a utility, it should be available to everyone. Now, when my husband and I moved here two years ago, there was enough knowledge and information that we could ask the real estate agent for a house that didn't have a whole bunch of trees and had a southern exposure. And we could put up solar panels. And our utility bill is now sixteen dollars a month. That's it. All year long, regardless of temperature, it's sixteen dollars a month. Now, that's lucky timing on our part. However, our luck can't apply to people who rent, people who don't have a south-facing roof because they bought their house thirty years ago when nobody knew south, south-facing roofs were important, and when the roof is shaded. So community solar would could correct this inequity, and it should be a no-brainer. Why is it illegal in Pennsylvania to have community solar panels? Maybe it has something to do with fossil fuel lobbyists. I don't know. But I'm standing here because I gave to Mitch the resolution that Third Act Pennsylvania introduced to get municipalities to say that they would like to have community solar for their residents. And it would give us the power to go to the state and say, look, people want this. And get the Senate to pass it. So um that's what I have to say. It's about fairness, and I hope you sign the resolution.
Thank you, Jen. Anybody else? Come on, come on up there. And we know you know the drill too.
I didn't quite hear that. Um, hi, Owen Parker, uh, six thirteen North Hanover Street. Um, and I just, conversation today, I just wanted to bring up that, that new roundabout on North Hanover Street is delightful. Thank you guys so much. Seriously, um. I, I, obviously, I go across that area multiple times a day, every day for a while. And I'm not used to seeing people actually crossing that street who are not like just pales of ghosts or anything like that. And now I can actually walk across that street with my dog and not, yeah, I can, I can do so. See. Um, now I don't see a lot of people crossing it. Um, the reason probably is that there, there are a number of tire marks on the inner ring. And I, I have heard there's been some unfortunate incidents of people navigating it. So probably is some kind of rejiggering you guys could do to make it a little more clear on how to use it. Maybe, I don't know, use turn signals so people know when others are getting, I don't know. You guys would be experts, but thank you guys so much for that. It's delightful. And, and one other thing, I don't know if this is just me being like hopeful and seeing things. But there, there does seem to be less severe, quick truck traffic going through. I don't know if that's me imagining stuff or seeing what I need to see. So if there's a possibility of measuring that, that'd be really cool. But once again, thank you guys so much. Uh, second point, also thank you for going to be working this up. I don't have any complaints, and thank you all. Right? That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Stephanie, do we have anybody by Zoom? Okay, we'll move on to presentations, and we have our, uh, our financial, uh, audit, financial presentation from Smith Elliott Kearns.
Yep. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tina Kurnell. Kevin will be up in just a couple minutes uh, to give the second half of the presentation. But tonight, we're here to present the results of the twenty twenty four audit that we just recently finalized, got everything submitted that needed to be submitted. So we're gonna give you the quick crash course results of um where you stand with how the year played out. Uh, we obviously met in much more detail with Jason throughout the process and towards the end as far as him reviewing everything and approving everything um on behalf of the borough. So there was a lot of legwork behind the scenes from the borough that went into uh finalizing the audit. But here, I'm just gonna focus on the very high-level uh results. So you uh should have or will receive a copy of the details of the audit, final audit documents. That includes the annual comprehensive financial report, which is the financial statements, the single audit package, and all of the other um sections of the financial statements that are required when you submit that annual comprehensive financial report that you get the certification for, uh, the certificate of excellence. Uh, it includes a lot of additional information that isn't always included in regular sets of financial statements that your peers may, um, your peer boroughs and townships may submit. So a lot of very good detailed information about the borough is included in that. Uh, also, in your packet would be the management letter, which is the letter that we use to communicate significant items to the board. Uh, that would include any kind of recommendations for things to implement or change. It also, we take the opportunity in that letter to communicate any upcoming standards that the board or that the borough will be responsible for implementing and adopting uh within the financial presentations of the financial statements. There were a few in there. Uh, they're basically ones that have been on the horizon for a few years and ultimately are now getting to the point of being finalized. You'll need to implement them over the course of the next few years. So as the years go on and you need to implement them, we'll obviously work closely with management to make any changes or add anything new that needs to be accounted for uh with those implementations. But we also include that information in the letter to just give you kind of a summary of what the standard is and how that will likely impact the borough. And then we also have our communication, required communication letter. We have a letter that goes out uh near the beginning of the audit with just some initial audit uh expectations and timeframes. And then we also are required to do essentially a follow-up communication letter at the end of the audit. This is what I call our catch-all uh report. Essentially, it's a lot of just various uh communications we need to include and communicate to the board. Things like um any significant estimates or disclosures that are in the financial statements, any adjustments that were made to your numbers from the time we originally got the information from management to what you see in your financial statements, and anything else, if there were disagreements with management, difficulties in performing the audit, any other issues, all of that would be communicated in that letter. Uh, this year and for as long as I can remember, it's always just been the standard language. We've never had um issues with the audit, so it's really just the required language that's in there. But that is also um another letter that you'll have in your packet. So in summary, for the borough, you have an unmodified audit opinion. That is the goal of an audit. It's the best opinion you can receive. Essentially, what that means is we didn't find anything throughout our audit that required us to modify the opinion. So that's obviously what you want to hear. Uh, the second thing you want to hear is no findings. Um, it's never a guarantee, obviously, with implementing new standards. You did implement a new standard this year regarding uh employee benefits for compensated absences. Um, it, it can happen when there's changeover. It can happen when you're implementing something new. It's not necessarily uh anything negative from that standpoint. It's just more of, if there's any findings that are reported, a lot of times it's more just of the, the learning experience. Uh, but there were no findings, no significant recommendations for changing anything you're currently doing. So that is another checkmark that you always want to get for the audit. Um, and third positive is you had uh positive changes in your funds. So again, depending on the funds, you could have use of reserves. For example, your capital funds, if you have a lot of capital projects going on. Uh, but ultimately, you want to at least break even or add a little bit to your reserves just as a buffer uh for future increases in cost. But you did have a positive change in your funds this year, so that also um is a benefit. And then lastly here, uh, pretty much every year, because of the federal funding you receive, you are required to have a single audit. And at least one federal program is normally selected for testing. So this year, it was your, your ARPA funds or the actual name of the, the program is the Coronavirus um Fiscal Recovery Funds. So the state and local fiscal recovery fund. So that was the program that was required to be tested this year. And we essentially do a deeper dive over the transactions that you charge to that program. Make sure you're complying with all the requirements that were stipulated in the grant that you received with that funding. And there were no findings that came out of that either. So positives all around from an overall uh result standpoint for the borough. Included in the financial statements, the beginning of the financial statements is our independent auditors' report. And that is where we summarize the results of the audit. So in there, it has the unmodified audit opinion. It is, just as a reminder, when you're seeing here, what that means. It means that the financial statements are materially correct. As an audit, obviously, we cannot, we cannot test every single transaction, so we select samples of transactions. So essentially, what we're saying is based on the procedures we performed, we believe that the numbers presented are materially correct, which is the goal of an audit. We also always remind you each year that this opinion is not an opinion on your internal controls. It is not opinion on a fraud investigation. They're different audits. This is strictly a financial audit that we perform, but there is a lot of confusion sometimes around auditing. So we always remind you of the differences. Also included in there is management's discussion and analysis. This is a really good part of the financial statements that gives you not only more of a plain English version of the events of the borough, what happened, forecasting of what's to come. There's also comparative information in there. So it gives you a little bit of a look back from the prior year to the current year and explains some uh reasons for variances. So now, just to very quickly look at some of your numbers, what you see here is strictly just the general fund. And it's looking at the twenty-three actual numbers to twenty-four actual, and then comparing the twenty-four actual numbers to your twenty-four budget. So the main thing I just want to point out here, um, because a lot of times you're really heavily focused on revenue and what revenue sources you have coming in. The significant variance in the intergovernmental is essentially driven by those ARPA funds that you had. Because of the, those receipts being front-loaded, meaning that you were just given a bunch of money two years in a row, um, but then had multiple years to use those funds. For reporting purposes, the revenue is recorded or recognized when you actually apply it against expenses, which is what you did this year in twenty twenty-four to utilize the remaining amounts of those funds. You add until the end of the year essentially to um, to uh use up those funds or obligate those funds. So it wasn't in your budget because the budget was more of a cash basis uh where you weren't receiving the cash in twenty-four. You already had the cash. You were just utilizing it in twenty-four. So that was the main reason for that fluctuation. But you can see the net change in fund balance the past two years uh has been positive. Overall fund balance, you can see in your different governmental funds. Uh, general fund is the one that has the most categories. And non-spendable, as you can see there, are things like long-term receivables, inventories, prepaid. Uh, your restricted is external funds that you're holding that have stipulations to them. You can only use them for certain purposes. And then committed and assigned fund balance are internal designations. Either the board or management has uh carved out some fund balance for future estimated costs for things like future employee benefit, expenses, capital uh purchases, the, any kind of subsequent uh year budget deficit, things like that. And then everything else for you is unassigned, uh, which is the thirteen million that you have that can be used for needs of the borough. Your proprietary funds, you can see all the different funds you have that are, are deemed proprietary for reporting purposes. And here again, just the takeaway, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, um, a positive net change in all funds. So obviously, the goal of those funds to make sure your rates that you have in place are covering your costs that you're incurring. A significant footnote that's in your financial statements is your pension plan activity and liability. Liability reserves that you have to report as on your financial statements. And here you can see non-uniform and police, you're just over being fully funded. Obviously, that can ebb and flow each year based on the investments and how well the investments are doing. But the goal is to try and stay as close to fully funded as possible, so you're sitting in a pretty good position there. This is part of the statistical section of your financial statements. And this is just showing you um your debt margin. And so it's showing over the past ten years essentially your debt limit, uh, where you're at in relation to that debt limit. And you can see, while you have been increasing because you have recently taken out some debt, uh, you're at about fifty percent of your limit. So not significant, uh, but has been creeping up just a little bit. The last slide I'm gonna go over here before Kevin takes over is just a quick summary of your single audit. So I mentioned earlier, you had the, the single audit this year was over your ARPA funds. Your total federal expenditures uh were four point, over four point seven million dollars. So all of your federal funds combined, the expenses that were charged in twenty twenty-four were about four point seven million dollars. The program that was tested as major program were your ARPA funds, the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. No findings were reported. Um, and just to give you an idea, that program, which covers a couple different programs, but they're all under the same uh assistance listing number, so we have to treat them as one program for testing purposes. Uh, that was about three, I think it was about three point four or five million in total. So very significant portion of your overall federal uh expenditures you had for the year. Kevin's gonna take over for the rest of the presentation.
Good evening. I'll just wrap up here briefly on a couple of items. Uh, Tina made reference earlier to our management letter. Uh, so again, the purpose of that, had we had any recommendations related to the audit, we'd have those here in this management letter. We didn't have any recommendations uh to bring to your attention this year. There is a summary of new standards. Uh, they're called GASB standards, the Government Accounting Standards Boards. I will not bore you with any of those details. We will assist with the implementation of those as they become effective. And the majority of the rest of that letter and the rest of the presentation here this evening is just some graphical analysis. Obviously, it's easier to see trends over time via graph than a page full of numbers. So the first graph that we have is just the cash and investment comparison by fund. Uh, so you can see the overall increases in the general fund as well as the capital projects fund. And the capital projects fund mainly due to non-spending of unspent bond proceeds as well as transfers uh that occurred during the year. And overall, again, you can see slight increases or slight variations amongst the other funds. But overall, an increase in cash pretty much across the board in each of the individual funds. On the next slide, it's just a revenue comparison. So it does break it down for the governmental funds on the left-hand side. On the right-hand side are your proprietary funds in total. Uh, so you can see the largest fluctuations being in the taxes category, obviously increased the fire tax during twenty twenty-four. But that does include all taxes there as well, uh, not just the uh fire tax. The other fluctuation is within the intergovernmental category, as Tina made reference to, is your spending of those grant funds. Obviously, you're recognizing the revenues associated with those as well. And also had additional state funding related to the transportation grants uh during the current year. So that's why you're seeing the increase in the intergovernmental or the overall grants. On the next page are just an expense comparison. Again, for the most part, fairly comparable across the board. I think the outlier being in the public safety category, and again, that's the spending of the grants that we just talked about. So that's a direct offset to the increase in the revenues from the previous graph. The last graph that we have is just an overall change in fund balance or net position. And as Tina alluded to earlier, there was an increase in each individual fund's fund balance or net position, meaning the revenue exceeded the expenses. And if you look back across those past five years, a couple of outliers from year to year, mainly with the capital projects and slightly with parking fund, but a positive surplus in each of the years in each of those individual funds. So the other letter that we have is just what's known as our required communication with those charged with governance. As Tina mentioned, had there been any disagreements with management on accounting principles, we'd have to report on those here in this letter. I'm happy to report there were no such disagreements, so it's just considered our standard communications letter. So just in summary, again, I think very positive results stemming from the audit this year. We were able to issue the unmodified audit opinion, which is the best opinion that we can issue. Happy to report that there were no findings related to the audit this year and did have a positive change in fund balance or net position. And again, no findings related to the single audit that was performed. I know that was a lot of information, I hope somewhat fairly quickly for you. Uh, but I'm happy to answer, and we're happy to answer any questions uh related to the audit itself or from the audit-related documents.
Are there any questions for council? All right. Did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. We appreciate doing a service for the council. If you were to have any questions after this evening, uh, please feel free to either contact me directly or filter those through management. We'd be happy to help.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And since we have a whole crowd here today, um, we, we love to be transparent with our uh funding and, and um, and if you are fascinated with that presentation, you should come back in two weeks for our budget meeting Tuesday, November eighteenth, uh, and it carries over to the nineteenth if it gets too thick. But we've never, I have, in my time, I've never had two dozen budget. But please do come back to that meeting if you would like to hear all about next year.
Thank you. And thank you to Jason and your, your team for uh, for, for the unmodified. We appreciate seeing that. Thank, thank you. Um, I, at the request of uh Counsel Schiles, I'm going to move on to his committee before we get into outside agencies because there are a couple of items of business that'll be relatively quick before we get into all the, the presentation. So Counsel Schiles, if you want to take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Schultz. I have uh two items on my agenda for tonight. Both of them uh pertain to uh uh to renewable energy. So the uh first is a uh, the first item is a resolution of the Borough of Carlisle, uh Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, calling on the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to pass legislation to allow for the creation of community energy programs in Pennsylvania. Um, I'm just going to uh, do, uh, should I read, should I read the resolution right here?
Yeah, you, you, you can read it or you just give a quick summary of it.
It's a, it's basically, we're just encouraging uh the state senate to uh, uh, pass uh, I'm trying to remember the bill here. Uh, it's uh House Bill Five Oh Four, uh, the Community Energy Act. Um, and uh, we, we're just, we would like it to, to pass the senate if, so we'd want to encourage them to do so. And this would basically just allow for um people who can't access uh solar energy on their own homes to collectively um set up a, a generation uh site and uh, and uh deduct that from their energy bills so that they could essentially have solar without having it on their roofs.
Okay. Does counsel have any questions about that, that one? We wouldn't act on it until next, next week's meeting. So if anybody had any questions about it, we make, make the resolution available. Okay. Thank you.
And then I guess uh the second uh, so the second item on my agenda for today is uh the, sorry, it's a uh, it's the uh, uh, it's a resolution of the Borough of Carlisle, uh, of Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, authorizing participation in the Pennsylvania Electricity Plan Collaborative. Uh, this is the resolution that I brought up um at our last meeting. Um, and it essentially uh, uh, is allowing us to uh submit an RFP with, collectively with other boroughs, uh, to seek uh a renewable energy provider. And what uh this would allow is it would allow for our residents to um sign up voluntarily. Um, and we would ideally be able to provide them with uh cheaper renewable electricity because um, because we are aggregating customers together. So rather than individuals going out and buying electricity, because we are um collectively purchasing it, we can try to um get a better rate. Um, and then uh, there's also some other advantages where we can uh try to reduce energy on peak days uh in the summertime um, and then use the savings from that to build out renewable energy that um could then go towards uh, go towards the um, uh, the residents who, who opted in for that aggregation. So it's very, they're very similar uh goals, uh, and they, uh, they have a lot of overlapping goals, and they are uh both completely compatible with one another, so.
And then the community choice aggregation is, is kind of similar to, for those who, who don't use it, you definitely should. Um, you have the opportunity um all the time, because we're decoupled now in Pennsylvania, to, to uh choose your, your power generator. Uh, and, and you really should look, look at that frequently, uh, because you can see very, very different pricing and different options. We're going to PA Power Choice. Uh, and this really just gives folks another, another option.
It gives us, gives them another option, but we're hoping that it also provides people, provides us with a way to control prices, um, which will likely be going up because of data centers and a lot of electrification going on in the region. Uh, it'll also be, give us a little bit more um consumer protection in the sense that um a lot of the, a lot of the energy um generators provided on PA Power Switch, a lot of times they offer like a introductory rate that, you know, you have to keep track of and worry about it going away in, you know, six months or a year. Uh, this, this kind of allows us to sort of um be a little bit more deliberate with how we price the electricity and not try to kind of like um, uh, you know, offer people introductory rates that are maybe a bit more predatory in some ways. And also, uh, by also being able to control uh the price of electricity a little bit to a greater extent, we, you know, we're preventing um customers from being gouged potentially in the future with any uh large increases in uh energy usage in the region.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Schiles. I'll note that there's a blank in that resolution that we would, we would be appointing a representative. Um, I would suggest it be Counsel Schiles. If there's no objection, we can get it drafted that way and then, and then again, act on, on that next week. As long as you're, you're willing to, to take that.
I'm, I'm happy to, yeah. Actually, there's a meeting scheduled, I think, for uh, there is a meeting scheduled for Friday, so.
You can, you can be there unofficially, I guess, until we until we act on it. Okay. All right. Thank you, Counsel Schiles. Is that, is that all?
That's all.
All right. Thank you. All right, we're gonna skip back to um outside agencies, and we're just gonna run right down the list. Um, outside agencies is an opportunity for um, for non, nonprofits and other entities and individuals um to, to uh receive grants from, from the borough to, to, you know, spread the good uh throughout the borough. And I know I enjoy these uh now, now twice a year, and we get to hear all the great things that all the organizations throughout the borough uh do for our, our, our residents. Uh, what will happen tonight is we'll, we'll have the, the presentations. Uh, counsel will have an opportunity to ask any questions they may have. Um, then the, a, a subcommittee will, will pull together a recommendation for counsel and, and we will act on, on those. And, and I'm sorry, for a minute, I didn't And I'm sorry, I didn't, at the December, at the December meeting. And maybe we'll, we'll have the recommendations pulled together. Do we have some rough idea when we'll have that for counsel to take a look at? I'm not putting you on the spot. I'm sorry. Sometime before December. Okay. So with no further ado, I will, we'll run down through, through the list of presentations. And I do know that Beacon and Company, unfortunately, she had an illness in the family and is unable to attend tonight. We usually like to have attendance so we can ask those questions. But first of all, we'll excuse, excuse that one certainly when there's a family illness. So we'll move on to Biddle Mission Park Labyrinth, who's here on behalf of the labyrinth.
My name is Holly Hoffman. And as you know, I'm here representing the Biddle Mission Park Labyrinth Board. I have with me Donna Hale and Donna Deal, I mean Diane Deal, who are also on the board. We built the labyrinth back in 2017 with the assistance of the Downtown Carlisle Association, Borough Parks and Rec. I keep looking over there where Andrea isn't because she was instrumental in helping us with that. And under the auspices of Carlisle Area Religious Council, we did. There were two main functions of the board, to build the labyrinth in the first place and then maintain it. The Parks and Recs Department does do the lawn mowing and provide liability insurance, but they do not provide any other money for upkeep of the labyrinth. And so time goes by and weather happens. As we well know, if you were in Biddle Mission Park right after that storm on June 30th, a lot of damage happened to the west end of the park. And they've improved that and put in new trees and a nice new path. People use that labyrinth. I go there myself a lot and see people walking the labyrinth. Donna's church uses it for a lot of events. I've held various events there. We partnered with SPY. As we've been sitting here tonight, Gina and our group has been planning an event for November 24th. So it does get used. Through all the weathering, it has deteriorated in those eight years. And we need to be able to make repairs that will sustain it. We are hoping we're using sealant that will last a good 10 years. But the initial installation included plastic edging and we are replacing that with flexible steel edging, putting gravel in and then putting a 10-year sealant on, as well as doing some shoring up and sturdying of some of the other structures there. My initial total cost estimate was going to be $2,000, but through some further estimates getting back from our landscaper that's going to do the application of the sealant and the sealant itself is very expensive. Current budget stands at $3,064, $3,064, yeah, $3,064. Cannot talk tonight. I have copies of that detailed budget if anybody would like to see it. This project supports the goals in the Borough of Carlisle by providing healthy and sustainable community, growing a healthy community supported by thoughtful neighborhood spaces, and welcoming and livable building and maintaining inviting and safe neighborhoods through recreational opportunities where the residents flourish. It also fits well with the funding areas at the start of the application, community beautification, social programs and services. This is a major nonrecurring maintenance to prevent further deterioration. Does anybody have questions?
Thank you for that. So you just happened to be the first one up here. So I'm going to preface this, but this will apply to many of the agencies. We have 15 groups here today and the total ask, if you add them all up, is $25,300. And we have $10,000 to give away. So similar question will apply to all of you, particularly those of you that are asking for a specific program with a specific program budget. If you don't get the full amount that you're requesting, will you still be able to undertake the project? What other funding sources are you considering?
We do have somebody in savings and I've also asked the Partnership for Better Health, who was a major funder of the original installation. I put in a Sparks grant with them.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Next is Bosser Memorial Library.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me here. I'm Jeff Swope. I'm the Executive Director of the Bosser Memorial Library at 158 West High Street. And I have a couple of folks here with me tonight, two of my board members, Becky Klein and Tim Scott. And although she's here for a different reason, I have a member of our Friends Board, Ellen Hare here as well. I know time is fleeting, so I'll try to be brief. I won't go over the details that I submitted to you in writing because you've been able to read those as well as the accompanying sheet. But the four areas we talk about, we talk about what the library provides, our collections, programs, services and technology. And I just thought I'd really quickly highlight one area in our 125th year this year in each of those areas. So the big hit this year in our collections is the Library of Things. And if you haven't heard about our Library of Things, it is a very broad set of things from yard games to sensory backpacks for children, to computer mice and DVD drives for people who need technology. So it's a really broad swath of items, sewing machine, a cricket. But the biggest hit this year in our Library of Things has been our museum passes. We have 11 different museum passes. One of them just added today, which is the Hershey Children's Museum. Our biggest hit this year has been our Lake Tobias Pass. But I just thought you might be interested in knowing that in addition to the people who have used these passes this year, the demand is greater than our ability and our capacity to supply them. For example, Lake Tobias's Pass has 174 holds on it and it just closed for the season. So we'll have to wait till spring to let people have them again. The Hershey Gardens Pass has 160 holds. The Whittaker Center Pass has 87. And that's just a few of them. So collections this year have really been focused on the Library of Things and that's been a real exciting thing to see people really light up about. In regard to our programs, on October 25th, this past, well, two Saturdays ago, we had our 10th Annual Comic Con, which is free to the public. And blew past our records in the past. We had almost 2,300 people in the library from 10 o'clock until 4 o'clock on Saturday. And this year, for the first time, we did a full-scale youth services and family services component. So that was a nice expansion to that. As far as our services, I do believe this is in the application we submitted. But this year we had almost 6,000 tax forms that we provided to the public, all free of charge, so that no one has to try to afford printing out the instruction booklet for the 1040. So we provide all of those for free. And then as far as technology and a grant that's system-wide for the library system, we now circulate laptops in the building for people who don't have technology but need to do work. And that's been kind of an exciting enhancement. So it's sort of just a spotlight on one thing from each of those categories. And then just to mention to you again, it's in here, but beyond just the traditional services the library provides, for about a year and a half now, we've been partnered with the Raze Project and we have a table in the library where people can anonymously pick up boxes of Narcan. And we have distributed more than 2,000 boxes of Narcan through the library. And we are a premier site for the American Red Cross Blood Collection. So we contribute to the health of the community, not just in lifelong learning, but in real health. And then I'm going to leave you tonight with words that aren't mine because I think the most powerful words are not my words. And that's just, I'm going to read you three quotes from some of our patrons. "When we moved to Carlisle from another state, we didn't know anyone. The library changed that. It became our social lifeline, a place not just for books, but for connection. Through Storytime classes and the Play and Learn Program, my daughter and I found friends and met wonderful people. She absolutely loves the toys, the books and the warm, welcoming atmosphere. The library is her favorite place to visit and honestly, mine too. It's more than a building. It's a community made even better by the amazing people who work there." "The Bosser Memorial Library has been instrumental in my reentry journey, offering unwavering support and community inclusion. As a justice-driven individual leading a nonprofit, I'm deeply grateful for their generosity in providing meeting space and resources. The staff's kindness and commitment to community empowerment make the library not just a place of learning, but a cornerstone for hope, collaboration and positive social impact." And then the last one I thought I would share with you is about a specific staff person, but overall about the library, I like to think. "Stephanie has assisted me on several occasions with some computer issues, printing, scanning and emailing important Department of Veterans Affairs forms for various claims and other benefits. Every time I have had the pleasure of seeing her, she is always working, sorting or stowing books or serving customers at the counter. She always greets me and other patrons with a smile and pleasant attitude and demeanor, as well as providing myself and others with exceptional professional customer service." I have a couple more pages, but I'll stop there. Does anybody have any questions for me tonight?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Next is Carlisle Area Dog Park. They're not on the list, but. Okay. Oh, you jump. We'll get, we'll get you next. We didn't have you on the list, but we'll. No, you go, you go, you go for it. You're here for Carlisle Area Healthcare Auxiliary.
I am Ellen Hare and I'm here for the Carlisle Area Healthcare Auxiliary. We're affiliated with UPMC Carlisle, although the auxiliary has nothing to do with UPMC and their monies and things. We've been with the hospital since 1916 and we run the gift shop and run the volunteers for the hospital. A big part of our monies goes to scholarships. I would say 80% of our monies goes to scholarships and that's why I'm here tonight to request money for scholarships. If I don't get the money, then the kids don't get, they get less scholarships. Last year, we graduated four students. So one is working at Sarah Todd. She was an A at Sarah Todd and she became an RN and now she's back at Sarah Todd working as a RN. Another is a physical therapist working here in one of the outpatient physical therapy places. We have a physician's assistant that started November 1st at a family practice locally here. And we also have, I'll tell you about Cody in a minute. It's really, I was a candy striper at the hospital and they gave me $200 if I worked 200 hours when I was in high school. So we've come a long way since then. But we really keep track of our kids. We send Christmas cards and we give our monies. It's spread out over the time of their education. So this year we have a scholarship tea after we give our monies out and they come and they can bring their families. Usually the president of the hospital will speak and also the chief nursing officer. This year Carly Han Gilpatrick was our speaker for the nurse and she's UPMC Carlisle Clinical Director. She received our scholarship in 2013. She was a student and went to Westchester. So that's kind of coming back to us. And also I want to tell you about Cody. Cody was a student and when during COVID, it was, it was horrible. We interviewed him in our gift shop because, you know, couldn't go anywhere else. He's went to Central Penn School to become a surgical technician and he was so excited. He's like, I'm going to work with doctors and everything. And I'm like, well, Cody, I think you're going to set up the OR rooms and clean up the OR rooms and stuff like that. And we, he took a job as a patient care technician up on our rehab, won every award, so personable. And about six months into his surgical technology, he goes, you're right, it's not for me. I want to become an RN. So he went to Shady Side School of Nursing and he graduated August 22nd. And in July, he texted me and he said, will you come to my graduation? And I said, Cody, I would love to come to your graduation. So then he sent me a formal graduation announcement and I went and I sat there. And it was wonderful to see him. He gave the speech and it was really nice. So we keep track of our students. We want them to feel wanted and we want them to work here so that, that we don't have any shortages of nurses, PTs, physician's assistants. So thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now Carlisle Area Dog Park. And no surprises after this one. We'll run right down the list.
All right. Thanks for having me. My email address doesn't play nice with the borough. So that's why I'm on the thing late. My name's Megan. I am the new president of the Carlisle Area Dog Park. A little bit about us, we are a volunteer-led nonprofit and our goal is to, we've already created, but now maintain a safe, accessible off-leash dog park in Carlisle Borough. So right now we're located at Schaefer Park. And we are working on building community connection and helping to foster responsible dog ownership in the borough. We are entirely funded through our nominal membership fee that we charge $75 a year for unlimited access to the park. And we raised that for the first and only time, I think, within the last three years. So all of our operations are funded by that. We don't, besides, you know, occasionally any outside agency funding grants, we are entirely funded by those memberships. So one of our main goals in the coming year, as we're kind of developing new strategic plan and trying to do more to build community and let people know about the park, we still oftentimes will have people that have lived here for years that have no idea that the park is a thing that exists. So we've made some strides in the past couple of months with trying to distribute some marketing materials, let people know that it is, I think, a really valuable amenity and it's one that people look for when they decide where they want to live. So one thing that I would like to focus on, we asked for just a general funding request that again, since we have very small budget and our budget is, we use it all up each year. There are a number of things we could use that money for, but mainly we want to focus more on community engagement, providing low or no-cost events, volunteer days, outreach, educational opportunities, and the opportunity to maybe offset a membership or to, or as many as we possibly could to those in need for whom the $75 annual fee is still a hardship. And I have had several people reach out and it would, I would love to be able to tell them with confidence that we don't want anyone to be turned away for lack of ability to pay a membership fee. So I would, I would want to focus any support that we can get from the council towards that, especially given, you know, the challenges that everyone's facing right now. So we, like I said, believe that this aligns with the borough goals of continuing to make Carlisle welcoming and livable, promoting outdoor activities, stewardship of our parks, keeps our community vibrant and thriving and helps keep us accessible and connected. So working on leveling the playing field and ensuring inclusivity for all of our residents, regardless of income. So in closing, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
It's in Schaefer Park, Offspring Road across from Karnes. Yeah, yep. You got to wind up off that. There's a much bigger sign that there used to be now. So if you drive by it, you'll probably see it.
It's a, it's a borough park that's just outside the borough border. It's in North Middleton Township.
Yep.
I don't know the history of that, but we won't go into that tonight. Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Carlisle Victory Circle.
Thank you very much. My name is Angie Fernandez Barone and I am the coordinator of programming for students in the Carlisle Victory Circle. And if I can get it to pop up. All right. I just plugged in the HDMI. Carlisle Victory Circle. Oh, I think it's coming. I think it's coming, coming soon to a screen near you. Yay. Carlisle Victory Circle has been around for 30 years, founded in 1995 to work with middle school and high school students in the Carlisle District and to help those students prepare for the future through education and character development. And before I say anything more, let me see if it'll go. Oh, wait, it's not advancing. Hold on. It's one of our students. I want him to be able to talk with you. Okay, one sec.
Steve C has meant a lot to me. I've been here for about five to six years, so since seventh grade. So we're at now, currently a freshman at Harrisburg University of Science and Technology. Steve C has really shown me the importance of community, being able to come out, show to your community how much you mean to them, leadership. During my high school, I was the president of my esports club, which I ran. It really showed the importance of being able to speak with one another, learn the different cultures that we, that everyone brings. learn the different cultures that we, uh, that everyone brings into the community.
So as I'm talking with you, I'll flip through some other pictures. We have, um, lots of ways in which we engage with the community. One of our students-led in activity table at the Imani Festival. Uh, we also take students on educational trips. Our trip to Washington DC was a real favorite. We spent much of the day at the National Museum of African American History and Culture. Um, we do a lot of cultural programming and I'm, I'm thinking about the borough's strategic plan and the goals uh, of that plan. This is, uh, a space where we really, um, promote learning about other cultures and building, uh, a diverse community of students. By the way, fifty-five students were members last year. Uh, and we think we're on track to have an even larger group this year. Okay, I'm not gonna do tons of videos. I do have some other videos. Maybe I'll show you the last one. It's a fun one. Um, this is, uh, a celebration of Lunar New Year where one of our students decided, um, that he wanted to teach the club about Lunar New Year and, uh, so did all of the research, put together the menu, we made some things homemade and, uh, he explained why the red envelopes were important and the chocolate coin inside. Um, so there are real leadership opportunities for the students who are involved too. That was a project of our middle school. Um, we work with, uh, Schipensburg with their Feed a Friend program and their Kwanzaa celebration. We work with Dickinson on a, a variety of, uh, programs. Part of the goal being that as students prepare for their future, they are with college students who can model. I didn't think this was gonna be possible for me, but, uh, but it is. And so that's an aspect of preparing for the future that's really important. Cookie classes, this is just a fun one, grilled cheese and tomato soup. Uh, we make gourmet grilled cheese. They were excellent. Um, but we do cooking classes once a week and this is part of our ask for this, um, outside agency funding so that we can do more cooking classes, more varied cooking classes, maybe bring in some guest chefs. Um, but we always provide dinners two nights a week when our students gather at our clubhouse on North Street. Um, but probably one night each week, it's a cooking class, so the students can learn how to make, um, inexpensive, healthy meals, learn how to make them, be able to take that home, uh, to their families. They love doing art projects. Okay, wait, I'm gonna jump ahead. Our celebration of Black History Month, our celebration of, uh, Earth Day with weeks of, uh, celebrating sustainability. Um, best part of it was our trashin' show, uh, which the students immediately decided was our first annual trashin' show. It absolutely has to be repeated. None of the things they put on came from the trash. It was, it was clean, clean trashin' show. Um, but we have a lot of fun. They're an amazing group. Another part of our ask for this, um, outside agency funding is to support biking initiatives. We're involved with the North Side Ride. Um, but we've had a really great partnership with, um, Dickinson Center for Sustainability Education and Life Cycle, uh, so that we can get students bikes through Life Cycle, but also provide helmets, lights, locks, um, so that they have all the safety equipment that they need. And then we do programming with them to learn about riding safety. But that's really opened the doors for our students to be able to like get part-time jobs because they have a, a bit more of an ability to get across town. Um, so that's the other big part of our ask. Okay, I'm gonna do one more video because this one's cute.
Alright, CVC is a place where it's always even awesome to be smart. It's a place for academic, I can't say, academic glory. A place to make friends. This is Carlisle Victory Circle.
Okay. Metta's not gonna say anything. She's not gonna say anything. Um, she just nodded, nodded in agreement, um, throughout what, what Sydney had to say. Um, no, it was wonderful. When I asked the students if they wanted to make some videos to talk about why CVC is important to them. Um, Hamza, who's, who you heard first, uh, was confident enough to just do it right off the, the top of his mind. Um, but the rest were really nervous and they wrote down all of their notes and so they were, um, reading those. But, okay, one last, um, note, Sydney talked about, um, how it's, it's cool to be smart. We do a lot that helps our students prepare for the future in, uh, in terms of academic support. So, um, we gather their grades, we give awards for good grades, but we also give awards for, um, much improved grades and we have tutors and all kinds of those things that we do, both in our, our school clubs and at our clubhouse. Okay. That's it for me, but I'd love to hear your questions.
Any questions? Go ahead, Sam.
First, I want to say this is just absolutely a wonderful program. I did have a question. Cause you mentioned a lot about like academics and kind of congratulating them on grades. Do you find that they do go to college at higher rates than say the average student in high school?
I don't know. The college going rate, four-year college going rate for Carlisle High School, uh, is just over fifty percent. Um, I think we've seen about that percentage of our students, but our membership are, it includes students who have a lot of barriers. Um, so I think that's actually really saying something if we see about half of our seniors every year, um, going on to some kind of post-secondary education. These are, um, students who, uh, with their families, uh, have some really serious struggles, housing insecurity and food insecurity. Um, that's where things like the biking program make a huge difference because these are not kids who are getting cars to get that job that might be a bit, bit of a distance from home, but they are going on to college at a nice rate. Yeah, and then coming back, which is really wonderful too. Yeah, both of last year's seniors are still coming like two nights a week just to hang out and tell the rest of the students about how college feels, which is cool too.
Any other, any other questions? I'll just say I've known Sid since she was a baby. So it's great to see.
Yeah, you have to tell her.
She looked right down the block. Yeah, I'll be texting her mom after the meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Community Empowerment Services. Good evening, Dr. Esper.
And, uh, thank you all so very much for, uh, giving consideration to, uh, our, our grant proposal, uh, to the council. And, uh, I'll, I'll start out probably, I'm saying the wrong thing, but congratulations to all of you for the hard work you've done and for the voters showing their appreciation for it as well. So congratulations to all of you. Um, my name is Michael Eskridge and I am the CEO of Community Empowerment Services. Uh, we began our organization two years ago. It was an initiative of Cumberland County Prison, uh, and, um, myself, my organization, uh, to develop. I have a, another, uh, business that's called Cooperative Educational Services. And I've been doing a lot of community, uh, development work. And Cumberland County Prison engaged me to develop a community, uh, support program for returning citizens. So that relationship has turned out to be, uh, just exceptional and it's growing and growing and growing. Uh, but the purpose for our grant application is to help pay for the student and facilitator supplies, uh, for our cognitive behavioral therapy program. This is an initiative that, uh, was, uh, comes down from the federal government, uh, Department of Corrections where they are, uh, rather than using the old term of rehabilitating, they are now focused on, uh, reducing recidivism and developing, uh, returning citizens that can be, um, productive citizens and community members. So they are, as I said, moving away from that rehabilitative of, uh, mode of moving forward with prisoners. Uh, and now focusing on giving them, addressing the, um, detriments of criminal behavior by, uh, treatment, a treatment model. Uh, when we were putting, uh, I worked with the, uh, Cumberland County Prison Parole and, uh, probation department to develop co-, uh, Community Empowerment Services. And one of the biggest things that they wanted from our program and that we developed collaboratively was to start looking at the things that are causing our, uh, returning citizens to go right back to jail. And the cognitive behavioral program addresses those triggers that have our folks returning to prison rather than being productive citizens. The, uh, cognitive behavioral therapy program addresses these kinds of issues that, uh, barriers, issues that our returning citizens face. That is trauma, drug and alcohol issues, uh, problem-solving skills, health and wellness, values, attitudes and behaviors and employment success. So as we've been in this two-year period of developing the program, this is how, uh, Community Empowerment Services has set, uh, the stage for full implementation. First of all, uh, this component with all of the folks that we work with, we have an individual success plan for them. And that is looking at all of the social determinants of health that they'll be facing to be successful citizens, returning citizens. So, um, we started as the, before we could implement anything with Cumberland County Prison, I had to become a certified facilitator for the cognitive behavioral therapy program. So that was a part of our strategic plan and our budgeting for the first year. And we also provided the materials for implementing the, um, um, how do I wanna say it, a pilot project? And this is our first year of doing it. And it has taken the efforts of teamwork to make it happen. We're working collaborative. We brought a team of the prison, which is separate from parole and, uh, probation department. And now we're working more collaboratively with bringing in an agency such as Community Empowerment Services. So that has been, uh, a big part of the change. We're inside the prisons before our guys are released. And we're serving male and female, uh, returning citizens. But that has been a big shift in making this all possible. Um, and we put the initial investment into it and I'm now actually operating the cognitive behavioral therapy program inside the institution. And we're working with folks before they get out, uh, released on probation or parole. Um, in addition to our program office, we have the individual success plan, which I mentioned. That has not been an offering for us to add for our returning citizens. That's now included as an option for all of our returning citizens that are assigned to us from Cumberland County Prison. And we're also moving that model into the community, working with homeless shelters. Uh, and it all arises from, uh, the, uh, dramatic need and the barriers that our high-risk, uh, citizens are facing. So our request to you is for, to help us, uh, buy the materials and the supplies needed to serve a broader spectrum of, uh, returning citizens and at-risk community members. That's what the funding will be utilized for.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Eskridge. Are there any, any questions?
Well, first I wanna, um, I thank you for the detailed budget that you included. Not everybody did that and I, I appreciate that. Um, so you said it's to buy supplies. If you don't get the full amount, will you still be able to do the program? And you just can't serve as many people? Or do you have another funding source or?
Yes, that's a very good question and, uh, we've kind of planned ahead on that. We received, uh, a, a grant from Partnership for Better Health. And we also, uh, I kind of move around bringing all kind of connections together. But Members First Foundation has really supported us with grant funding and also utilization of their corporate headquarters to hold our, um, leadership events and so forth. So it's growing, it's growing, it's growing as long as I'm involved, it's bringing us all together.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eskridge. Next is Cumberland County Historical Society.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Lindsay Varner. I'm the executive director at Cumberland County Historical Society. Uh, and our ask was specifically for our Vail Heims Pocket Park. So we are located at twenty-one North Pitch Street. A little over a decade ago, there was a condemned, condemned building that we owned right next to us that we made the decision to take down and put in a small park right next to our museum and archives. Uh, it's been about ten years since that park was installed and it is starting to show quite a bit of wear and tear. Um, on top of that, we also have found that we are getting a lot of use from the park. Uh, and that uses particularly around meal times. Uh, if you've been to the park, it only has bench seating and so it is difficult for people who are sitting and eating breakfast, eating lunch. Uh, my office faces the park and there are people in the park every single day, um, which is wonderful. That's what we were hoping to see from the space, a, a public space next to the museum. Uh, so we are looking at removing some of the park benches that are in there. They are starting to show a bit of wear. They do need to be replaced anyway. Uh, and we want to add bench, additional bench seating, uh, picnic tables so that people can sit and eat, uh, including one accessible picnic table, um, so that people can wheel to the, the side of it. Uh, this is also a space that when we have large school groups in, especially in April and May time, we have almost a thousand students that come through our building. Uh, the park is the place that they eat lunch and so this will just make it a much more accessible space for all of the students who are coming through. Uh, we are hoping to do this project, um, whether we receive funding or not. Uh, we might just have to rethink some of the materials that we use. Um, initially, when we did the park, we used, um, uh, treated wood for all the benches. We're hoping to have a little bit more longevity in the future, so we were looking at using some alternative materials like a polywood type material. So if we didn't receive funding, we would probably rethink some of those materials. Um, but given the use of the park, we're hoping to do the project either way. So, any questions?
Anything? Alright, thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Next is Enchanted Forest.
Hello. See a lot of familiar faces here tonight, so that makes me feel a little more comfortable. It's my first time doing this, so. Um, uh, I'm with the Enchanted Forest. Um, my name is Melissa Acker. So I am the owner and operator of the facility and it's an indoor play space in Carlisle. Uh, previously I was a childcare director and, um, teacher at a local establishment for twenty years. I left there last fall and decided to open my own place. Um, I do offer childcare, drop care, um, date nights. I offer, uh, field trip experiences for preschools, for camps, um, Girl Scout troops such as that. Um, I also offer, uh, indoor play time for, um, kids. The parents can choose to stay or not. Um, and I have a boutique within my establishment as well where it's also kind of the chill zone for parents, so they're seating in there so their kids can play and they can hang out and get a little bit of time with each other, which is great. Um, I also offer a summer camp program, so, um, I am asking for funds to help, uh, primarily with that program. I hosted last, um, summer, uh, fourteen students. I hosted last, um, summer, uh, fourteen students, uh, twelve slots, uh, for the full-time program. I did do three days a week. Um, I'm hoping in the future I can do more as per requested by the children. Why don't I, why am I not open all week? So, um, I'm definitely thinking about that, but, um, I was a little apprehensive to do that right off the bat, just opening in May and then starting the program a month later in June. That was my goal when I decided I, um, started running the facility, the middle of February. I hand-built everything inside, including tables, all the structures, indoor monkey bars, climbing wall, all the stuff. So, um, besides my passion for kids, I love creating, so, um, it was a really good, um, mesh there. And, um, so I'm asking for, um, funds to help with my summer camp program, any of the programs that I offer, uh, whether it be the, um, Sunday, Sunday activities where parents can come in, bring their kids, and do a creative art activity, a cooking activity. Uh, we've done like ice cream making, uh, we've done, um, I, where I brought in like science. I bring baby chicks, the mom, the babies, uh, eggs, so we, we, um, investigate all that. So a lot of fun with that program. That was definitely a, a crowd pleaser. Um, with the summer camp program, I did that as well. The kids absolutely loved that. Um, and we also, um, I'm really into supporting local. I always have been, even in my previous job. So, um, I like to take the kids on field trips, um, we go to the Carlisle Pool. Uh, it ended up first, it was just every other week we're going to do that, and then it turned into they loved it. So, we're going to do that every week, and my goal is to, um, have funds so that I can just purchase passes for each kid that's enrolled. That way, they can use the pass for when they're with, with, with me, but then also when they're with their families as well, which I think would be great. Um, and especially when, I have a lot of students who are friends outside of school. They can go and, and do that together, which I think would be great. Um, we also take, uh, local field trips to local eateries, so we, Hamilton's a favorite. Uh, we've gone to the Carlisle Theater, um, just a lot of the different local establishments, Creative Palooza. The kids love those kind of, of places to go. We, uh, frequent like the park as well and use the splash pad facilities. So, I'm just really trying to get the kids out there local as well. Uh, Buzzer Library has been great, too. We, um, go there every week, and, uh, we, uh, frequent at the bookery. And each kid gets to pick a book each week, um, to take home for their library at home. It was far cheaper to do that than to have them take out books and then lose them. So, just.
Pay those fees, you know what I'm saying?
So, I'm trying to think smart about it. Um, so, um, but overall, I'm really hoping to, um, host, uh, at least another twelve students again this summer, uh, and, um, provide early education experiences for the children. Um, kids, uh, I, I was fortunate enough with my previous job, seventy-five percent of the students that enrolled in my program this summer were from my previous job. So, um, that made me feel really good and show my reputation of having kids, um, following me to where I am and the families being comfortable with me, um, taking their kids and exploring with them over the summer. So, that's it. Any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
I had no idea this existed.
I, I know, I'm new. I just really opened.
Uh, I'm just saying, this is great.
Thank you.
Super wonderful. Um, I think that children lack a lot of third places, um, third spaces to be children. And so I really appreciate, uh, what you're doing here.
Thank you. I think it's important, too, that, I like to emphasize that not only do the kids get to come and be kids, but parents get to come and be kids, too. So I think it really supports community engagement, uh, with the community that we have, but also with engagement with families within the community and for parents to really be engaged within their kids. A lot of times as parents, we're so focused on working and getting things done and bringing work home and trying to cook and do all the things we're trying to do that it, it's really important to be able to engage with your kids. And this provides you an experience that you're not in your house, you're not worrying about your laundry, you're focusing on your child, so.
Good.
Um, yeah, so I just had one question about, um, the programs. Are they all fee-based programs? Or are any of them, do you offer any free programs at all?
So, um, because I am a private facility and I'm not a technical daycare center, I can't get any sort of funding when it comes to, like, in my previous job where I could get a lot of grant funding, and I can't take, um, Childcare Works or anything like that. Um, so I did a funding scholarship program on my own this year. In May, I hosted a silent auction, and, um, I actually went around town and I collected items and also purchased items. And, um, I made a thousand dollars with the silent auction, and that money was used. Um, I had several families that, um, a few families that were from my previous job but that were typically on subsidized funding, and they couldn't afford it. So I ended up using that scholarship money that I had raised on my own to provide scholarship for those families. So I told them I would match whatever they were getting, their rate was at the, um, whatever they got through Childcare Works.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Next is Carlisle Eastside Neighborhood Association.
Hi, I'm Sheri McMeen-Mannick, and my husband Dennis is with me, and we live at two-twenty North Bedford Street. And I'll just mention Curtis Patrick, who completed the application, was supposed to be here, but he wasn't feeling well, so you've got me instead. Um, we are from Eastside Neighbors. We are one of the few, if only grassroots neighborhood associations that still meet monthly in the borough. And as many of you know, one of our projects is to help control the feral cat population on the east side, although we have been branching out to other parts of the borough. Eastside Neighbors has received emails from people who have contacted the borough regarding TNR, which is trap, neuter, and return. And these emails have been forwarded to us by, uh, Public Information Coordinator Stephanie Tale. And through this, we've met a lot of nice people who want to help control the feral cat population, um, through TNR, so it's not just a concern on the east side. Currently, Eastside Neighbors has funds to TNR about twelve more cats before we're out of money. The cost per cat is forty-five dollars through Nobody's Cat Foundation. And in addition to the surgery, this includes a rabies and distemper shot, ear tipping, which is a universal sign that the cat has been fixed, and flea treatment. Every once in a while, we've had a cat that have had, that has had medical issues, and at no additional charge, they have given the cat fluids if it's been dehydrated and antibiotics if it's had, uh, infections. The cost for somebody to take their own cat to the vet for these same services would be well over two hundred dollars, I'm sure. So this year, we have done eighteen cats. We started in twenty-sixteen, and to date, we have fixed ninety-one cats. Some of those cats, we found homes for, but the majority have been returned to where they were trapped. Of those cats, ninety-one, uh, of those ninety-one cats, thirty-eight were females. And I should just mention, one female cat can have two or three litters per year. So I quoted, um, from Nobody's Cat Foundation, "The average unspayed female can produce two litters of four to six kittens per litter each year." And her spring female kittens can produce their own litters by fall," unquote. So in theory, a single unspayed female cat roaming outdoors can have three litters resulting in twelve kittens. And one year later, those twelve kittens, if kept unspayed, could have a hundred and forty-four offspring of their own. By the third year, the original cat could have, lost my place there, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight descendants. And by the fourth year, this one cat could be responsible for ten thousand seven hundred and thirty-six cats. And these statistics were taken from the ABC Clinic Pet Refuge Animal Birth Control Clinic website. Who knew? Eastside Neighbors would use these funds to TNR feral cats, some of which have been found on the former Frog and Switch site, as well as some newly discovered colonies on the west side. So we hope you'll consider our request for funds to help control the feral cat population in the borough. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheri. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you so much for doing that. I, I have been advocating, I'd love to have a borough-wide program. So I appreciate that you are branching out beyond, um, your own neighborhood. Thank you.
Well, there are several people who are, are plotting colonies in the borough, and, um, we have ideas in the works to come back. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sheri. Uh, next is North Hannover Grill. Is anybody here from North Hannover Grill? They're probably right, right in the midst of their, their dinner rush. So maybe we'll give them an excuse, and in fact, because when I was chatting with Chris about something else, and he was telling me about this Greek festival idea he had. And I said, "Oh, you should, you should apply, um, for our outside agencies." So that's, that's why, why, why they're here. So if anybody has any questions, I'm sure swing by North Hannover Grill for some dinner, and, and Chris and Terry will, will answer all your questions. Uh, Neighborhood Dispute Settlement.
Good evening. My name is Nahola Overton. Thank you for having me. I've never done this before, so tell me what I'm supposed to do. But, um, Neighborhood Dispute Settlement, also known as NDS, is a small nonprofit. We are centered in Harrisburg, but we partner with Carlisle, Middletown, Susquehanna Township, City of Lebanon, City of Harrisburg as well. And what we do is provide conflict resolution services, um, and mediation. So basically, what we're doing for your residents is we're helping those situations where they're calling the police because my neighbor won't turn their music down, or their dog pooped on my lawn, and your officers are coming out to deal with that. They don't really need to do that. They can call us, um, either give us a referral, excuse me, directly, or have your residents call us. And what we do, we have trained facilitators that basically help them, excuse me, trained mediators, that basically help them facilitate a conversation about what their issues are and how we can peacefully resolve this to come to a resolution. It's important to let you know that we don't provide any type of legal guidance or counsel. They're just there to help that peaceful conversation, to help with, um, res- resolving those issues that they might have. Um, we deal with civil matters such as landlord tenant issues, neighbors, um, uh, broken families. We've had situations where it's, um, siblings calling because grandma is now older, and she was going to leave the house to us, but now the cousin is saying we can't do it, and they don't want to get, uh, lawyers involved, but they want somebody that can be that neutral party to sit down with them and help them talk through those issues. So those are the types of matters that we deal with, as well as co-parenting, um, helping parents find, uh, new schedules with their, uh, visitation, different things like that. Um, if we are not granted the funding, I am in the process of, um, looking for grants, continuing, working with our different, uh, municipalities and partners to find funding. Um, but one thing that we have new is that, um, we have a speakers bureau, and that's something on the side that we would love to know who specifically we can talk to. Our speakers bureau is focused on outreach and communications and the public relations part to kind of put more information out, um, on a larger level than what I'm going to do here tonight, to have your community members, to have your small businesses, to have the different organizations here, your police officers, the department, understand what our services are so that they know that, hey, here's a flyer, call Neighborhood Dispute Settlement, they can help you work through that. So this funding will help us with, um, doing that production. Also, because we're all volunteers and we don't ask anybody to pay for the service, we do ask them to provide a donation if they're interested, but nobody gets turned away. And then we only have volunteers. Therefore, we want to get to the point where we can, um, um, thank our volunteers in different ways, whether it's a gathering for the holidays, whether it's, um, okay, maybe we can provide your gas to be able to meet with these families, excuse me, these families in their area instead of doing all of our mediations virtually. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you for your presentation. Next is Safe Harbor. And this was the moment I was going to recognize former Mayor Tim Scott, but he snuck out because, uh, as I was going through this list, thinking about all the organizations that he's been part of over, over the years, and I think this is maybe about the last one on the list that he, he was. I was going to say all these nice things about him, but he left, so he gets nothing.
So, give me Mayor Scott's full presence, CEO of State Harbor, for the great occasion this evening. I know that most of you in council, uh, are very, very hopeful we do, but, uh, I'll try to be very brief. So, on the words before, from the outside agency funds, we'll support our emergency shelter and temporary housing programs. Um, you should know that State Harbor has a long-term, uh, emergency shelter program in Cumberland County. It is longer than ninety or a hundred and twenty days to do that, but the long-term emergency shelter program that does provide a year's meeting, that's where the housing and emergency shelter. As you, as most of you know, we provide housing and supportive services for homeless and living homeless individuals and families in our community, uh, to disrupt the cycle of homelessness and to achieve stability. And stability is very important. And as part of that, uh, it's tools for self-sufficiency or supportive services, health and decked-in rituals and bandages to bring in resources, skill building, uh, counseling to be on crisis and learn how to obtain and maintain affordable housing. Our temporary supportive housing program, programs, or, uh, last year provided over twenty-two thousand shelter nights. Uh, this year, we're attracted by over twenty-four thousand shelter nights to homeless and living homeless individuals. Our budget is significant. What's most significant is that this year, this year, we're finishing at the end of December, fundraising, which includes community donations, events, and grants such as the outside agency, is forty-seven and a half percent of overall progress. We anticipate with, you know, certainly with regards to federal budgeting and other, uh, things that are happening in terms of budgets, that, that will rise to fifty percent in the next fiscal year. Currently, because of the lack of state budget, uh, we've missed, uh, over fifty thousand dollars that will come to us from the, the public assistance program. And so hopefully, uh, we can do all soon, and we'll have the money then before the end of the calendar, which we can hope this year. Um, lastly, the money that we are asking for, um, it costs approximately fifty dollars a day to house a supportive resident or family in our emergency shelter program. So, money we're asking for is to provide three-five-day shelter services for one home resident and any children. So, even though it's a small part of our budget, every dollar counts, you know, but every year, doesn't matter where we're getting the funding, every dollar counts because we have a couple of kids who don't get to get a thousand bucks.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions? Are you checking the microphone? Okay. Thank you, Scott. We heard you.
Um, can I just chime in and maybe suggest that we can connect the, um, woman from Neighborhood Dispute Settlement to Lorraine and, uh, Chief Landis, so that perhaps she can, uh, help point potential people that we are working with towards, uh, towards the Neighborhood Dispute, uh, organization.
Yeah, I think, is our department already familiar with Neighborhood Dispute? Yeah, yeah, yeah. They've been here a few, few years, but we can always, I don't know, I don't know if our co-responders are aware of that organization, too. Make sure we put that on the radar. Yeah, great, great minds.
Great. I was just looking at Chief's report, and there were a number of, um, incidents that I think, um, the Neighborhood Dispute Settlement program could really help out with, so.
Thank you, Councilors. Uh, next is Samaritan Fellowship.
Oh, sorry.
My name is Amy Towne, and I'm here to talk to you about Samaritan Fellowship. Uh, at Samaritan Fellowship, we are a nonprofit ecumenical group of volunteers. Uh, we help people, we've been helping people in the Carlisle area since nineteen fifty-eight, although I've found, when I started working with this group, that not many know who we are and what we do. Um, we service the Carlisle area school district, uh, Middlesex Township, and South Middleton Township, uh, or school district, I'm sorry. Um, Samaritan Fellowship's clients come to us, um, through many people that are living paycheck to paycheck. Something happens where, uh, you know, they lose their car, their car breaks down, they can't go to work, therefore they lose their job or they lose their income. So they come to us for help with that. We meet every Saturday, um, and I mean every Saturday. There are volunteers there from seven-thirty in the morning until we are done. Um, these people come in, they fill out an application, they meet with two of our volunteers. We discuss what we're going to, you know, what their problems are, what their needs are. And then we take that back to our board, which is a three-person panel, and we discuss it. Um, we do not pay them cash. We don't give people money. If they have a landlord that they need a month's rent, we'll call the landlord, try to make arrangements, see if we can reduce the amount that we need to pay, or at least give them a little bit of leeway. And then we will send the money directly to the landlord. But it's amazing how many people in our community are in need of groceries, gas money, rent, car repairs, um, I can't even think of all the things that they come to. I can't even think of all the things that they come to and ask us for. And every week, we sit and meet with these people for two and three hours and help them. And whatever money that we get from this grant, if we do, just goes toward our budget of helping people every single week with whatever we can help them with. So a few other things I can tell you about our kids. When the kids come in, that's when we kind of step up our little bit of amount of money that we might give to people because we don't want to see kids being homeless or living in an apartment, living, I'm sorry, living in a hotel room. And that happens a lot. People come to us, they're living in a hotel room with a hot plate. They don't have any way to get to work, or they might not have a job. So we will help them. We'll help them with grocery vouchers. We'll help them with, you know, maybe some rent if they can find a place to live. We do work with a lot of the other groups in Carlisle. We refer people every single week to Community Cares, which is an amazing group. They are just phenomenal. We call them on Saturday mornings. We're just calling them up and saying, hey, I've got somebody here. They're homeless. They need help. And they will say, send them over. So we do work with them. We work with Marinatha. We try to get people to go to financing and have them help. We use Todd Baird Lindsay Foundation, Todd Baird Lindsay Devlin Foundation. We refer people to them. So we use a lot of the area things that we have, you know, services that are available to people in town. So we use a lot of other ones, but we just, we see a lot of people. We might see twenty people on a Saturday morning. So it's, it's a really good service. Does there anybody have any questions?
Any questions? No? Okay. Thank you for your presentation. And don't feel like you need to stick around with a bad back. Sure. Next is Supported Partnerships for Youth.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Gina Somme with Supported Partnerships for Youth, or better known as SPY in the community. I know many of you are already aware of everything we do, but basically, SPY is an academic and social emotional enrichment program for your at-risk elementary-age, now middle-school-age students in the Carlisle area, South Middleton, and Big Spring school districts. Specifically, we served ninety-five students last year that live in the borough, a hundred and fifty-eight total in Carlisle, and then the additional students that are South Middleton and Big Spring. Those students that are not necessarily living in the borough, though, also come from families that they are employees of the borough. So indirectly and inadvertently, we assist over two hundred kids and families in this, in this area. What I want to share with you is an understanding of how kids get referred to SPY and the importance and the reason why we continue to grow and why I'm asking for some funding from this opportunity. We work with the school districts, the teachers, the counselors, and the principals identify students that are struggling in the classroom. A lot of times, it is academically, but that's not necessarily the case. We actually have instituted a scoring rubric recently because the number of referrals and the number of kids that we turn away keep growing. So we needed to find a way to prioritize the need and make sure that the kids that are getting accepted into our program are the ones that have the greatest need. Again, it could be academic. Ninety percent have two working parents in the household, so childcare is definitely an issue. There could be just a general concern for the child's welfare or some social and emotional development, some help with them handling some very intense and heavy emotions that our program helps work kids through. So with that being said, the need is great. We all know that childcare is very unaffordable, particularly at that school-age level. So during the summertime, we keep kids safe in our community. We do academics in the morning time. We take them to the library, to the pool, go on field trips. We fill their afternoons with fun, and we love them. And we also feed them breakfast, lunch, and an afternoon snack because one hundred percent of the kids in our program are on the free and reduced lunch. Over the last five years, our budget has grown from about ninety thousand to we're approaching four hundred thousand. I wouldn't be here if I didn't feel passionately that we need to serve the future of our community and that any amount of funds will help. I will, as Jeff said, don't take it from me, I do have some quotes from some parents. Specifically, I had, we had, we worked with Dickinson and did an evaluation of our program just to find out what it meant and how we were serving our families and our children. And one parent said, it helped with work, you know, because even though school's out, I still have to work. I'm a single parent, so it really is helpful in that aspect. They feed them. They take them to places like all the stuff I wish I could do, but I can't do because I still have to maintain employment. And not only the parents appreciate the fact that we're providing care for their children, but the children get it. We had two summers ago when we always have this, but, you know, our kids are, are not your angels. They're, they're handling intense emotions, and we're helping them how to handle that, how to be better citizens, character development. And we do have to send kids home sometimes. And one comment that a child had made at one point that really tugged at our heartstrings was that he was so upset because he knew. He said, please don't call my mom. I'm really sorry because now she can't go to work. So the families are so grateful. This means a great deal. Everything we do is free. And not only that, I'll, I'll leave you with a happy. They did interview some of the kids, and one of the little girls said that, the mom said that when her daughter came out, she said this was her first year doing SPY. So on her first day of SPY in the summertime, she came out and she said, this was the most amazing day of my life. So thank you for this opportunity and for helping us sustain our growth. Thank you.
Any, any questions for Gina? No, thank you. And last, last but not least, Jay Sherwood and McGinnis War, Peace, and Justice Project, together with Rotary Clubs, Carlisle.
We came, we came to bring peace tonight, but I think we created some tension because we're the only group here left to keep you from going home to your cold dinner or taking in your dinner tonight. I'm, I'm Scott Buren, the co-founder, a co-founder and president of the Jay Sherwood McGinnis Junior War, Peace, and Justice Project. I live at one eleven South College Street here in Carlisle, been a resident here since two thousand eight. I'd like to say a little bit about the Jay Sherwood McGinnis Junior War, Peace, and Justice Project. It's a long name. And we named that in honor of whom I consider a great humanitarian, was a resident, a longtime resident of Carlisle, career foreign service officer, Sherwood McGinnis. In fact, this month is his four-year anniversary of his passing, and we remember him every day that he's not with us. If he was here today, he would probably elbow me in the ribs and said, that's a misnomer. It's the Carlisle War, Peace, and Justice Project. Because we're a grassroots organization, we're partnered with Dickinson College, Penn State Dickinson Law School, the Cumberland County Historical Society, who are great supporters, the Chamber of Commerce, the U.S. Army War College is a participating organization, and there are a couple of external organizations. And we're currently working with Messiah University in Schipensburg and celebrating the nation's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday next year. We're committed to sounding the bell for peace. For the last three and a half years, you've probably seen us on the Old Courthouse steps every Thursday night from five-thirty to eight-thirty, supporting peace and justice in Ukraine, but also support local community levels, to speak out against violence, discrimination, and injustice, and try to bring compassion to our citizenry of Carlisle. I'd just like to say a little thing, and it's a Hunter Brinkley approach here because it's a combined effort between the War, Peace, and Justice Project and the Rotarians. And I'll turn that, as far as the Rotarians and the actual Peace Project, over to Mike Zick, who's a Rotarian. Rotarian is also a member of the War, Peace, and Justice Project. Ancient philosopher, Chinese philosopher, once said, in order to bring peace in the home, must first bring peace to the heart. If there's peace in the home, there's peace in the neighborhood. If there's peace in the neighborhood, there's peace in the community. If there's peace in the community, there's peace in the city. If there's peace in the city, there's peace in the nation. If there's peace in the nation, there's peace in the world. And peace begins at the community level, at the home, in the heart. Peace cannot be imposed from above. For the last seventy-five years, that has been failing at a great cost to this nation. And because we spend close to a trillion dollars in our defense budget, we can't support these great events and agencies and organizations and projects that occur here in our own community. So again, thank you for your great support. We are committed to, to building peace as a community of conscience here in Carlisle with our partner organizations. But the, the project here, which I have great respect for Rotarians, we love working with them. And now I'll turn it over to the actual project that we're requesting funding for, and that's for Mike Zick of the Rotarians.
Yeah, hi. I'm here representing all the Rotarian clubs here in Carlisle. So that's the Sunrise Club, the Sunset Club, and the Noon Club. By the way, if anybody's interested, we'd love to have you at one of our meetings. What we're talking about here is peace. We're talking about putting at least two poles here in the borough area, hopefully all of them readily accessible, that people can visit on a routine basis. But it's more than just the pole. It's about a ceremony that would go with that on an annual basis that would be championed by the Rotary Clubs to bring people together to talk about peace. Each one of those poles would be anywhere between six feet tall to eight feet tall with anywhere between four languages to eight languages that say the same thing. May peace prevail on earth. That's peace in our communities, that's peace in our nation, and that's peace in our world. We think that now, more than any other time right now in history, we need to have that, that camaraderie where we can pull together all entities to say, hey, we're not alone, you're not alone. We can work together, we can listen to one another, and we can build a better community, a better world. All right? What we're hoping for is some funds to actually contribute to that. Each pole runs about a thousand dollars. That would be buying the pole and actually putting the pole in there and then a little gardening around that. Could we actually reduce that amount of money per pole? Yes, we could. We could go down to one pole in a, in a specific location. If you're asking us, we would probably champion like something like in Veterans Park or maybe even, you know, one, actually, if we went to two poles, one at the high school, to make sure that our children understand that we as adults want a better world for them as well. But yes, can we get funding? We can try to get funding on other places. But what we're hoping for is the community will at least contribute something so we, we know that they're with us on this project. We open up for questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
And so these are in addition to the one that you're working on with Dickinson, is that right?
Yes, Dickinson is interested in putting one there on their campus, and we are working with them, and it's separate from that one.
They've already approved the peace poll for the, for the college campus. It's a matter of finding a sponsor apartment, education apartment on campus to sponsor the work.
And the location, we would work with the borough on, and actually the selection of languages. You could go demographic-wise and what's the different languages that we have here in the Carlisle community. It could be anywhere between, obviously, English will be one of them, but it could also be Native American, Leni, Lenape, or something in between. We're open to that.
Any other questions? I thank you for your presentation. Thank you. That concludes the outside agencies. We'll move on to our meeting minutes. Is there a motion to review and approve the October first, twenty twenty-five workshop meeting minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next, under public safety, I move the council authorized the closure of the entire block of C Street between Factory Street and Northwest Street on Saturday, November eighth, twenty twenty-five, from ten AM to three PM for a craft show entitled Clay for Kids' Sake, sponsored by Mud Love Pottery Studio to benefit underprivileged children in the area. Approval is contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of insurance, naming the borough of Carlisle as an additional insured, and the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Ruse. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. We've already taken care of sustainable community and economic planning, so there is no new business. Is there any further public comment this evening? Stephanie, anybody online? No? I'm gonna, I'm, I'm just gonna conclude, one by congratulating Counselor Shiles and Counselor Perry on, on their electoral wins last evening, and to recognize Counselor, Counselor-elect James in, in the audience with us here tonight. And as I was thinking about, you know, really historic turnout in the municipal election last, last night. And we're, we're all here because we love local government, and I think it's heartening to see that, that kind of, that kind of turnout. But I, I thought about the words of Benjamin Frank when a woman asked, asked him what, what kind of government they, they formed, and he said, it's a republic if you keep it. And it, it takes an active community and active voters to, to keep this republic. And, and so I, I couldn't get sleep until about midnight last night because I was so excited about, about, about not only the results, but the, but the turnout from, from our, our voters. With that, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.